All right, welcome everyone to the Youth Commission meeting on August twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. I'm gonna start with section one, I'm going to call the meeting to order and we will start roll call. Oh, we call this meeting to order at exactly six thirty two P M. Now we start with roll call. District one Commissioner Dashmook.
Present.
District two Comis- Vice Chair Pradeep Kumar.
Present.
District three Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
District four Commissioner Babu.
Present.
District five Commissioner Guerrero.
Present.
District six Commissioner Canfield.
Present.
District seven Commissioner Huen.
Present.
District eight Commissioner Gonzalez Muniz. District nine Commissioner Yu.
Present.
District ten Commissioner Park.
Present.
Citywide, I'm present. All right, we have quorum. We'll now move on to the second item, which is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? I Commissioner Pradeep Kumar motioned to approve the calendar. Any seconds?
Commissioner Sanchez, seconds.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Please vote on your screens. All those opposed? All right. The consent calendar has been approved unanimously. We will now move on to item number three, which is public record. Do we have any public record?
No, we don't.
All right. Item number four, open forum. Do any members of the public wish to speak on any item on the agenda?
We don't have any.
All right. Item number five, we will now move on to the discussion and action section. All right, item number five A, we have an informational presented by Margaret Sullivan on the Facilities and Customer Experience Plan.
Okay, so nice to see some familiar faces again. So nice to meet some new faces, it's a privilege and an honor to be working with you all and your direct inputs on this plan are certainly making it even more valuable for the future. So today, we're just gonna give you an update on where we are. We've had a really wonderful, robust session this morning with some staff leadership group. And it has even given us more color to what you're seeing today, but we wanted to give you a good update. So the project overview is, we've been hired to create a Facilities Master Plan for all, to reimagine the experience for all of the libraries in the system, as well as create a corresponding customer experience plan of a guideline of activation strategies to make your buildings come alive, the twenty first century contemporary learning experiences. Some of us are here today, Grace Tillman and I, and we have another group of wonderful talented folks who have been on some of the trips. Liz Opert, Jade Esplin, and Lauren Landrum round out our team from Margaret Sullivan Studio. So, the context in terms of what is a Facilities Master Plan and Customer Experience Plan is it really is designed to answer four critical inquiry questions. So the first is to articulate the role and purpose of our facilities for today and the future. Because when library facilities were designed, the last time we all had a large C I P plan was twenty years ago, and since then, the role of the public library has changed tremendously. So we want to evaluate, are the buildings getting their highest and best use for how the talented staff are designing library experiences today? The second is just looking at, are the sizes and shapes of the facilities meeting the community's needs? The third, and this is the work that we've really been digging deep into for the past three months, is how can we really energize and work and co-create with the community and community partners and the staff to invigorate and inform this new vision? And then the final question we're asking is, are there innovative opportunities for both not just funding, but also how can partners bring value to activating the facilities? There are a lot of stakeholders that we've been meeting with, and again, your inputs are really directly benefiting the overall outcomes and inputs of the plan itself. And believe it or not, we're on the fi- what we call the final mile. This is a really dynamic time where there's a tremendous amount of inputs that we're making sense of, and we're starting to see some clarity as we get to this final moment of the plan, but then there's also after a plan is published, then there's also another period of time where it gets activated and implemented. So this is just the beginning of the work ahead. We are on trip number three. And then the next trip will have the final emerging framework, and that's happening in just around the corner in a few weeks. And then the final trip will be the adoption and the share out to all the stakeholders. And just a reminder of what our final deliverable is, we are working on our Imagine the Possibilities Report, which is the findings that have come from the first two trips. And then that will result in the recommendations in the Facilities and Customer Experience Plan, which is broken up in two parts, one, the facilities recommendations, and then the second is that customer experience activation strategy. So process and methodology, just a reminder, what we've been doing is we've taken the vision and strategic goals of folks like you, leadership at the library, and even leaders in the community to inform and really learn what are the goals and objectives of community members. And then we've taken those inputs, and today's workshop especially was really focused on what are the space planning components that the future libraries will need. And then the final work session is what we call the service and program design. So again, that's the activation strategies and operational strategies for the library and some other terms, you all are all in the business of economic development, but often you hear community leaders talk about community co-creation, and then the place-making, which is what we're doing now with the facilities components, design, and then placekeeping is how do library staff members really honor the long-term vision of what this facility's plan has in each and every day, the service strategies that they employ to make wonderful experiences. Our methodology has included research for community development plans and comprehensive plans, we've even looked at the mayor's objectives. We've done questionnaires, we're visiting all of the libraries. We've introduced case studies, we'll even introduce more to you all tonight. And then we use the really rich data-driven demographic and equity tools that San Jose Public Library is privileged to have to see where we need for alignments. So again, we are, part of our process will be visiting all the libraries, we're almost we're almost there, Grace is visiting some more tomorrow. And then what we've been making sense of recently is we, you all, the San Jose Public Library hosted the most, the largest partner convening that Margaret Sullivan Studio has ever engaged in, and I know many of you all were in attendance. Extremely successful partners are extremely involved and engaged in what the library is doing. And they had a great time designing the future public library with stickers, as if they were an elementary school all over again. We've conducted some really wonderful community focus groups, and I think S C U Commissioner Park and the picture up there. So your inputs have been incorporated into our work. And we had a wonderful community event at the Viva Caye. And so we got a tremendous amount of community inputs through that event. These are the list of focus groups that we've been meeting with. And we've, we have had and we are having even more community stakeholder conversations. The, I think the biggest takeaway of all of the engagement is again, the deep appreciation for what the public library does for the community and of, and a request to continue to be involved in the ongoing work of this, what this master plan will, will generate. The strengths, our work is strength-based, so we're hearing a lot about what the community values, about what the public library offers, but also just, we are learning what makes San Jose a wonderful place to live, work, play, and learn, and I think what we're also hearing a request for is what's, we want San Jose to really be celebrated as a place of cultural diversity and history. And one of the community members that we had a one-on-one stakeholder conversation with said, I feel like we're losing the soul of the city, so we're really seeing the library as an opportunity to to center diversity and celebrate diversity, not just historically, but in the future. So, the, we're also surfacing how the systemic challenges that San Jose is facing today and how the library is adapting and responding to unconventional roles of the public library. So we also want to build on that. Many of you have also identified these as some of the challenges that you all are passionate about. And so what's, what we hear from you all is when we talk to you about what are those systemic challenges, what changes do you personally are motivated to make, to make quality of life better for the residents of San Jose? It really challenges our thinking about what the public library is. So you all have told us that you want to make sure the community has equitable access to mental health resources. You want to ensure support for those experiencing homelessness and especially homeless veterans. You want to ensure that everyone has access to college preparedness materials and opportunities. You want to ensure that all have the tools they need to transition from being immigrants to really being integrated into society in a meaningful way. The, the desire for animal rights and having animal shelters is a great way to, for us to think about in the public library, what does that mean? And then ensuring public transportation and safety, and even this, this request had us do some research about how public libraries have supported that challenge or need in their communities, and there's a alternative library called Estalita's Library in Seattle, and they were providing free rides through a library-sponsored E V vehicle. So these, these types of unconventional requests are encouraging us to research and find out how have public libraries or public institutions supported these challenges. So thank you, thank you for, for helping us think differently. The community survey, y'all should be very proud, it was three thousand responses. That's quite high, we also had responses in all of the five languages. Because it's an equity-driven process, we don't wait the highest responses over low responses, we take all of those and look at them equally to understand their meaning, so I want to give you that context. But some of the questions that we ask, what's your closest library and which ones do you visit the most? This was very enlightening because it told us that folks visit multiple libraries for multiple things, so that helps us think about an ecosystem of library experiences. This is the question of how are you currently using the library? And so when we see in all of the languages, it's pretty consistent, check out materials, attend programs, and use some of the spaces. That we want to provide more variety of uses so that it supports the types of programming that the staff is currently doing and will want to do. So this is a good measure of, of the need to offer variety. And then drumroll, we're starting to see what folks are requesting, and so I think you can see some of the things you've told us that are interesting. So, community garden, outdoor spaces rose to the top, so community garden, even reading garden. One of the higher, this may have been an in-process at the time, the survey may not have been closed and it was in-process, but number six on the list was a Center for Happiness, and so what we thought was interesting about that is that really doesn't have any definition, that's not a precedent type of space, but the fact that the communities are seeking that, again, tells us, well, what does, what does it mean if we were to create a Center for Happiness experience? And there's a lot of research right now out about what creates happiness, which includes being a place for social gathering, social belonging and connectedness. Galleries and studios, and then again, more kind of outdoor experiences, nature center and trails. So some specific things that we, we heard, academic research area, instrument library, and neurodiverse specific wellness center. And so when we asked neighborhood library, you start to see some of the same same request, but just want to call out quiet study areas and then the wellness center. But then other requests, storage lockers, fix-it clinics, and a dedicated senior area. And again, we're seeing some of those requests over on the left, the bar chart, and if any of you all want to see more of this, some of the survey information, please let us know, we're happy to provide all the data. But I think what's interesting about this slide is when you look at the top three requests by the language, you start to see real variety and cultural identities pop up. So I'll let y'all just kind of look at that for a bit to see those varieties. So again, what's wonderful about this is it helps us think differently about the conventional norms. And the staff is really excited today to see this because they're like, it affirms what what they're seeing, their requests come, and the relationships that they have with their community members. And then the final question we asked was, in the future, our, our libraries will foster a more fill-in-the-blank Madlib, Madlib, San Jose. The top choices were literate, curious, civically engaged, accessible, fun, and communal. But again, because this is an equity-driven approach, we look at all of the answers and will incorporate them into the final plan. But I also think what this affirms is much of what you all have also been telling us that you envision for the future of the public libraries. And then what we're learning is that we've created a set of frameworks. And so the expanded role of the public library, we've, we've identified six areas of focus, civic vitality, economic wellness, educational success, personal health and wellbeing, trust and belonging, and cultural identity. This was a very successful framework at the Partner Breakfast. I think many of the partners saw themselves somewhere in this framework, and were able to find aligned opportunities for partnerships with the library in it. As you can see at the Partner Breakfast, the folks that represented education were by far the largest represented, but you can see the variety of social issues that many of the attendees also are supportive of. But you can see how they really took advantage of a framework worksheet that we provided where there was an opportunity to write, what are the needs they're seeing in their communities in San Jose? What are the opportunities to partner with the library to help support these needs, aspirations, and challenges? It's a very successful workshop. They all design libraries just like y'all have been designing in abundance. So it was great to see their creativity flourishing. And they identified a set of spaces around messy creative spaces, learning and early literacy, spaces for community to, to gather, particularly around adult service spaces, and then digital education and career opportunities as a theme. And then just to show you all some of the successful workshopping for Viva, Viva Caye, nothing is cuter than seeing a, a family in bicycle helmets designing a library, but again, just a real appreciation for the public library, an appreciation for being asked to participate in this process, and then creativity, courageous creativity of providing us with what they see as opportunities, even if it's outside of the norm. But again, a lot of outdoor and rec spaces coming to the top, youth gathering and learning spaces, and then spaces for creativity and the arts. And anything that's highlighted were areas that we saw kind of spikes and repetition. Berryessa was also equally as robust, folks got stopped and really engaged, and again, similar themes, community gathering spaces, outdoor and recreational spaces, early learning and, and youth development spaces, and arts and cultural spaces and programs. So where we are starting to really see some other alignments is we're taking, what are these community challenges and needs that are expansive? Put, ooh, sorry, putting them through that framework of the role and purpose in the focus areas. And then what is the responsibility of the citywide ecosystem to help support the success of providing holistic approach to learning, social, and cultural programs in San Jose? And where's this, where does the San Jose, San Jose Public Library's role exist in order to really help define what are the buildings, what can the buildings do, and what can the buildings, what, what is it okay for the buildings not to do? Because we're seeing the world as an ecosystem. So where we're seeing some emerging themes, answering that question is what's our strategic role? Not just what's the role and purpose of our buildings, what's the strategic role as a system? It's the city as connected community, so that's the social and gathering role. City is classroom, that's the education and economic development role. City is cultural celebration, that's celebrating cultural identity. And then one thing I just, I really want to thank you all for is that the city is that civic activator, because we really heard from you all how important it is in the future for libraries to be that place for organizing, educating civic literacy, civic organizing. And you all have requested more of a role to ensure that folks can really expand and scale the experience that you all are having. So thank you for, for challenging us to, to make sure that was one of them emerging themes. So now, okay, so this is where we get analytical, so those of you who are in the analysis, who like the analysis brain are gonna get geek out on this. So we're looking at all of the library buildings across the system and looking at their sizes. And really, the sweet spot is once you get to be about fourteen thousand square feet, you can really behave and do all of those roles and purposes pretty seamlessly. So we're looking at, if you're not at that fourteen thousand square foot size, what's, what is the best and, and most optimal use? They're looking at that, and then the second thing is we're looking at where are those locations that have co-location models, and then of course, King is the outlier because it's so large, so we're just starting to analyze what's the building for, I mean, what's the building size best suited for? And can it accommodate the contemporary uses? And then we're also looking at those what we're calling development typologies and starting to name them as to, are they standalone without that much around them? Are they adjacent to schools and parks and other public amenities that create kind of a micro ecosystem? Are they on a busy road, we call those an on-the-way library? Are they co-located with rec centers? And then also are they park-adjacent, because we're trying to find are there synergies in the way that they're sited? And so you're starting to see us identify those in this diagram, excuse me. And then we're also looking at the different size distribution, just to, to make sense of the real estate portfolio. And then we're studying the insides, and what we're really looking for is how flexible these buildings are, if you, someone told me this, act like you're just turning the library over and shaking out everything that's not in place. So we're looking at that for the feasibility, and what we're really looking at is, here in this diagram, you can see how there is a pretty significant amount of usable public space, it's just in-between stacks. So if we were to inverse that and galvanize and put all the public space together, can we create that adaptability and flexibility that we're seeking? So that's what we're doing here, this is called a blank slate, or if you're in the world of art, you've heard the term tabula rosa, which we're really, you know, if we were to start from scratch, how would we transform some of these existing facilities? And the good news is, we're finding a lot of opportunity that is flexible and adaptable to transform the existing facilities for the future. So now, with, with us looking at some of the practical, we want to keep your imaginations going and show you some of the fun things that other libraries around the country do, and we call these small projects for big impact, so sometimes you can really start in a small way to, to test new ideas. So this is the Nature Explorium, a very small outdoor garden that became a hotbed for intergenerational learning because this country, I mean, this library worked with educational research to design a curriculum for outdoor activation strategies, so it's been a very successful model. And then the one that everyone loves is the Culinary Literacy Center at the Philadelphia Free Library. And it was an experiment with, I think, the cancer centers of, of Pennsylvania to create a nutritional literacy space, but it has become so much more, and the the program that they did that gets everybody teary-eyed is that for new immigrant populations, they conduct like a six-week course that's really framed around English language learning, so folks will teach each other their favorite home country recipes, they'll cook them together, and then they'll sit and have dinner together, so it really ultimately creates community, and it helps particularly women immigrants who don't have a net women immigrants who don't have a network or a support system develop one through food and socialization and learning. And so it's been very successful for that reason. The bubbler, the Madison Public Library was a small maker space and they weren't sure exactly what type of equipment they wanted to buy. So they just invited community partners to come and activate the space, bring their own equipment. And then over time, it grew community and they grew the type. They were able to identify what the community was interested in. And so they bought the equipment as a result. And it's become a very active, vibrant, successful space that has grown into all types of making and learning. I did visit the space. It's not even the size of this portion of the room. And then this is a fun one for y'all. The idea box at the Oak Park Public Library is a dedicated small area where the community members just take over for about three months and create different activations and participatory engagement. And this is an example of one of, you know, how can we make our community better? And then finally, this is a fun one, Camp Happiness at Anything. It was one of the first public libraries to really get into mental health and emotional well-being. And so they did a whole kind of mini exhibit on what creates happiness either through sound or through gratitude journals. And so they developed a service and a place that supported what it, what, how we can, the science of happiness in an environment that fostered that and created that. So that is it. That's where we are. And the next few weeks for MSS is going to be very busy. We're taking a lot of information and it's a dynamic time where we're making sense of it. And then we'll be back in a few weeks for our final session and then we'll be developing the actual plan.
All right. Thank you so much for your report and for coming out here. We know it's a lot of work, but we really appreciate it. And we really do appreciate being involved in the whole process. So before we move on, I'd like to ask, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
All right. Then I'd like to open the floor for Commissioner Discussion to ask questions. Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Good evening. So thank you so much for your presentation today. It's really clear how how much thought and effort has been put into the plan and the process. And I'm really fortunate to have been a part of it, especially during the virtual focus groups that happened earlier this summer and also the partnership breakfast that happened. So with that, I have a couple of questions. So starting off with the rise of AI and technology, how will this plan be beneficial for youth and families, I guess, 10 to 15 years from now? Okay, because with the rise in technology, there's also a rise in the need for social interaction, a sense of community. So I guess, how will this plan act as a foundation to address the very different needs youth and families may have maybe 10, 15, 20 years from now on?
Excellent question. Sometimes in our world, we call it, how are we future-proofing our facilities for future changing needs? And, you know, I often call it the crystal ball question. But one of the ways that we have designed our work is that we look at what is, what are the consistent needs of us as human beings that are constant throughout our civilization? So I think you you spoke to it in terms of we're going to need socialization. We're going to need places for creativity. We're going to need spaces for reflection. We're going to need spaces for folks to give us guidance and take us through our, both our learning journey and our career journeys. So that's where we are trying to get that right mix of places and spaces that can foster that enduring, those enduring needs of humanity. But we also want to build an infrastructure or framework that that accommodates and adapts to changing technologies and changing tools. So although AI right now, I think is a both and it's both a tool and it's going to be a cultural shift and disruption and transformation as it already is in our society. I recently had a conversation with the head of community colleges in California who's spearheading the AI initiative for the community colleges. And she said, you know, as a librarian, it's just one more level of information literacy. So that was a good way to help frame it. And then the third thing I'll say is there's going to be a conference, a futures summit, futures conference on the future of AI and education here, September 9th through 11th at Santa Clara. And I'm actually going to that because I also want to answer, I want some more guidance to answer your question as well and ensure that we've in all of our facilities, we're supporting that. So they're at different levels. We're future-proofing. We're we're taking, we're ensuring that there are places and spaces that can accommodate changing technologies and even lifestyles. And then third, we just have to continue to do the research and and learn and continue to learn what these significant disruptions and opportunities are going to mean for the way we use our public institutions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think having like the futuristic like framework in mind is a very intuitive way to go about it. So I was just wondering. And for my second question, I think this was briefly mentioned earlier, but you've emphasized a lot of inclusive design and I guess community co-creation, which is something that really stood out for me. And from the youth perspective, one of our priorities we've like clearly shared is wanting libraries that feel like, you know, supporting calming environment rather than just a study hall. And with that in mind, what is your, I guess, vision for making sure all students, especially those who are neurodivergent and have special accommodations for learning accessibility or like wellness? And see their needs reflected in these new facilities?
So I think there are two ways we'll ensure that. One is that in the place-making components, again, creating spaces for reflection for alternative needs of being throughout the day and really responding. There's such a significant amount of science right now on environments for neurodiversity and accessibility. And then the second is because this is a plan with recommendations, there are will be a set of guiding principles that we can incorporate that the directives will be at every step of a design process in the future. Not only are what we know now about accessibility and neurodiversity incorporated, but that are, as we learn more, it continues to be iterated upon. So we can, we can certainly ensure that is incorporated.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Park.
Oh, okay, there we go. On slide 29, for what spaces system-wide would you like to see? I really liked the Nature Center slash Trails. And but I had one question about that one. So for the trails, what would this look like? Would it be trails connecting libraries together? Or is it trails going off into a park?
So I think that is an excellent question. And I think that's where we're going to continue to study because we're going to see what's, what the what each site supports. I mean, the other question could be, is this an independent typology? That doesn't isn't attached to building. But today, one of the creative answers to that question, one of the the staff working groups put the nature trail right at the entry and said it connected to the next, excuse me, it may have been the health and wellness team where they were connecting it to a nature trail and tapping in. So that's something we'll, we'll continue to study.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dashmook.
So first I would like to say that I did attend the virtual focus group and I do really like appreciate this project and really like the goal of it. I guess one question that I had was, when you've been looking at all the libraries in San Jose, have you been keeping track of the number or amount of people who regularly attend these libraries? And would it affect how you treat it or how you change it as a space?
We are looking at who the core users are and what their needs are. And the one of the first exercises that the staff did was persona. And so they took their core customers and turned them into customer personas to develop those future activities. And then there's also data that we have on current utilization that also incorporates some of that data. So we're using that methodology of who are the core customers to really inform how do we deepen and enrich their experience?
Thank you so much. Commissioner Huen.
Hi, thank you so much for sharing with us this presentation today. About the use of public space at the libraries, I think I found it really interesting how libraries are taking into consideration the stacks and then the use of public space. About that, I wanted to ask like, what are some other challenges? Whether physical or not physical to creating these new spaces in libraries?
So I think one of the biggest challenges is that as a public institution, we have such a diverse spectrum of user types. And so how do we create a welcoming and belonging experience that really honors what everyone's needs are as soon as they walk in, walk in, metaphorically or physically literally walking into our space? To ensure that at that moment, at that time, what this biggest strength of the library are is that we can have a a unique customer experience for every single person that walks in our doors. And just ensuring that our spaces support that in a way that makes everyone feel comfortable. And so one of the things that we saw today was the staff said, you know, we want in one of the libraries, I think they were the education group, they wanted everything at the front to be active and vibrant and youth-centered with early childhood up to the teens. And then that was the loud part and then zoned it so that by the time it was in the back, it was the quiet, more reflective space. So I think those are the biggest challenges really are those tensions of how do you serve all in a space that requires so many distinct and sometimes contradictory environments?
Commissioner Sanchez.
First off, I'd like to say thank you so much for your report. And I also wanted to ask for slide 24, I see that you addressed like, what are some challenges that San Jose is facing today? And what is the library doing to respond to them? I see the housing affordability one and I see something that connects to it, like the family learning centers. What else is there to like help other type of people that are facing that challenge, like veterans or other people like that?
I think there are different levels, certainly. So one is just at its core function, a public library offers information and resources. So making that those information and resources as available and as accessible as possible to folks who need them when they need them. And connecting folks to the community partners that are doing the good work as as quickly and efficiently as possible to really create a solution-driven end goal. There's some other, I think, alternative ways. So the Family Resource Center, I think, is a model for holistic social service approach to what folks are needing. And St. Louis County, for example, is doing preventative health programming with the hospital system that's kind of builds on that model. But we've had some really fun, creative, like very optimistic approaches to this that came out of today's session, as well as the, we, some of the staff wrote user narratives and user journeys. And one of the ideas was an almost home pod that was a place that felt like a hotel where folks that are experiencing homelessness could come and have a restful respite, could have showers, could get some food and just kind of get their their minds in a place where then they could enter into the library experience in a more stable way and that the library could offer this almost home pod, which I thought was really creative. And then today, some, a group that was doing that, the economic success wanted to do a multi-purpose library that had affordable housing above it. So these are some creative things that are coming out of the process.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Park.
All right, I'm back again. So for the surveys that you used, what were the age demographics? So was it youth, adult or senior most?
That is a very good question. I'm not sure. Did we take age? We didn't, we didn't look at age. So that's a good question.
Yeah.
But but I will say there's sometimes a reason that we don't put certain types of questions in our surveys because we know that we're getting that compliment. So for example, at the Viva Caya, we knew we were getting a lot of youth and young families. I will say the survey, like the one we delivered is typically adults are the ones with those, I mean, sorry, responding to those surveys. And so that's why we complement with other focus groups and with the Viva Caya.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Babu.
Okay, thank you so much for this insightful presentation. That was really good to listen to. I just have a very like specific question. So on slide 25, it mentions that one of our passions is immigration and I'm super passionate about immigration as well. So about that, I feel like a lot of these are very general ideas. Has the library thought about how specifically we're going to tackle and how specifically we're going to address these passions and give it to the needs of our city? Because I know like saying that we want to tackle immigration is one thing, but I feel like we need to lay out like exactly what we want to do for that. So for that, are we going to get student input? Are we going to like send out more surveys or like, how do we plan on doing that? And I guess the second part is after the official plan is laid out, would this be a gradual process or would we be like executing it as a whole and then determining like the effects of it?
Good questions. Regarding the question on immigration, I can speak to this, the goals and the space planning of the this process. And somebody from the library might want to speak to the larger larger goals. So what we are wanting to really focus on is what are the best practices for new new Americans immigrant services that we're seeing across the country? And how can we support that with the types of spaces, whether it's ESL classrooms? Citizenship classes, citizenship, like graduations are very important and ceremonies. So we're creating that holistic place for the, all of those activities to occur. We also will probably be looking at the look and feel and the cultural representation so that folks really see their cultures represented as a welcoming invitation to the library. I think one of the things that you'll probably see in most, not only the libraries here in San Jose, but across the country, there's a very specific look and feel that looks like American public buildings. So we're really looking at how can they be transformed with intentional interventions to reflect the culture and that signals the invitation. It also ties back to the history and cultural identity of San Jose, which is historically diverse and continues to be. So those, that's, I think, the, how this portion of the work can support the strategies for inclusivity and immigrant services. That leads me to answer the second part of your question, which is when I said, you know, there might be small interventions. What we're going to be delivering, and this is the, the, the work that we're about to engage in, is in What we're going to be delivering and this is the, the, the work that we're about to engage in is in, is a implementation strategy. So um, we'll be looking at small, medium, and large investments to create big impact. Um, and then there's a, a, a list of um. Opportunities for implementation that um. Leaders and oppor- and as opportunities for funding arise, have a really good set of um. Of opportunities that are aligning with community need and community funding opportunities. So we want to set you up for success in that way.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Right. I also wanted to say, um, once again, thank you so much for coming out. Um, I want to point out one of the items on our work plan for this year, which we just crafted last weekend. Um, it is celebrate San Jose's diversity and culture through exploring community building and placemaking.
Oh, great.
Yes, and so I want to mention this because it's extremely relevant to what you've mentioned now. And one of the things we're aiming to do this year is to tie in. Our connections with San Jose Public Library Resources. Which includes promoting things like language services, um, community art, community fairs, and also just. Public library. Facilities, things like that. Um, so yeah, we really appreciate that you're here with us. And yeah, if you have anything else to add, we're always here to listen.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you all and I love that you all are in the business, getting into the business of placemaking. Um, because that's really where that. Um, you're, you're blending your public servant role. For the public library as well as a community economic development leadership role, so. That's really evolved and sophisticated thinking.
Alright, do any other commissioners want to comment before we move on? Alright, thank you so much for your presentation. Alright, moving on to item number five B. We will be talking about the Commission joint meeting date with the Library and Education Commission. So this will be on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Alright. We will now take a vote. Do we have a motion to approve the joint meeting date?
I, Commissioner Park, motion to approve the joint, joint meeting date.
Any seconds?
I, Commissioner Babu, second.
Alright, please vote on your screens. Alright, the date has been approved for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Next, we will move on to item five C, discussing youth commission annual survey dates. So this is talking about our budget summit survey, which is sent out to a bunch of. Youth through the library system over the next few months. In the past, we've held it in November, we've sent it out in November. And it'll run through December, mid-December. And then about six months after that, we usually hold our budget summit landing around at the end of January. This year, um, we cannot approve it until the November meeting. Which means it's likely we're going to push everything back and have our budget summit at the end of February instead. So, keeping that in mind, um, and after we take public comment. We are going to suggest some dates which we think we should open the survey and when we should close the survey. Alright, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Alright, we will now open the floor for commissioner discussion.
Uh, uh, it would be, we would be having the actual budget summit like end of February, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Um, could, could you just repeat the exact timeframe we had the survey for the, for last year?
Yes, so last year we a- last year, we approved the survey in October. And we started it in late November. It ran through mid-December and we collected the data and made charts for it. Until the budget summit at the end of January.
Some dates that could potentially work. Would probably be beginning of December and running through mid-January. Alright, Commissioner Deschmuk.
I think one thing that we do need to note is that in December, that's usually final season for first semester. Um, for most youth in San Jose, so most likely we'd be getting most of our responses in January. There's nothing wrong with that. It could still definitely work. It's just something we need to keep in consideration that most of our responses will probably come later.
Alright, Commissioner Canfield.
Um, I just wanted to ask how the, how the survey is going to get out to the youth? Will it be through the library only?
So it is through our outreach team, your individual YACs, and then also the library system.
Commissioner Babu.
Um, would it be okay if we open it at the same time as last year and then keep it open for longer? So then instead of closing it in December, we'd go through to mid-January?
So, because we have so many joint meetings this year, we do not have the. Time to approve the actual survey and things like that, so we have to push everything back. So one idea is starting the survey on Monday, December eighth. And then running it to MLK Day, which is January twentieth, January nineteenth. One of those days.
Commissioner Park.
Is it possible to extend the date to January thirtieth or Ja- January thirty first?
So typically, we like to leave around six weeks between when we close the survey and when we hold the actual budget summit. So that would push us into mid-March for our budget summit, which is a little bit late. Um, it is feasible, but I would not recommend it.
Okay.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
I personally think, given that our November meeting is the, the Monday of twenty fourth, if I'm not wrong. I think it's a good idea to launch the survey on the week of December first, which is also a Monday. Have it open throughout December up until maybe the middle of January. I think that gives, like you said, I think that gives us enough time to analyze the data and. If we say take out two weeks of December for like finals and winter break, things like that. It still gives ample time for people to respond to the survey because we have the first half of December and the first half of January.
Alright. So that is also what I'm thinking. Do any other commissioners agree on that subject?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
Alright, do we have a motion to vote on December first to January twentieth for the survey dates?
I, Commissioner Park, motion to move the dates to Jan- from December first to January thirty. Or twentieth, my bad.
Chair Kucherovski, um, so we might want to have this survey run from a little earlier. Uh, Tuesday, November twenty fifth, so that um, students from home. Uh, from Thanksgiving break could also take the survey, so we have a, yeah.
Okay, um, would that mean we'd run it for longer or would we end it early as well?
Uh, I think we would run it through December, so it would still clo- or actually. Still close on MLK Day, the January nineteenth, um, but yeah.
Alright.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion to approve those dates of Tuesday, November, not Tuesday, of November twenty fifth to January twentieth for the survey?
I, Commissioner Park, motion to approve the dates to, from November twenty fifth to January twenty.
Alright, any seconds?
I, Commissioner Canfield, um, second that motion.
Please vote on your screens. Alright, the dates for our survey will be from November twenty fifth to January twentieth. Moving on to item five D, we will now select a youth commission budget summit date. First, do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Alright, the floor is now open for commission discussion. One thing I will note is that usually we want to have six weeks between when our survey closes and when we have our actual date. Keeping in mind holidays, events, and other things. Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Um, adding on to that, for specific dates, February sixteenth is President's Day and I'm sure for most schools, the entire week is Ski Week, if I'm not wrong. And our youth commission February meeting is on the twenty third. And if I'm not wrong, we generally have our budget summits on Sundays. Is it a possibility to have it on Saturday as well, in case? So that's something we can keep in mind.
Okay, Commissioner Yu.
Um, I want to ask if we're actually going to work with the Santa Clara Youth Task Force on this? And if so, will we need to also discuss the date with them?
So that is up to the work that we're doing over the next few months. Um, it's kind of in the air right now. We can vote to change the date later, um, but for right now, we do need to select a date. We can also vote for multiple dates if we are conflicted. Does anyone have any suggestions?
Um, I would say the twenty second is when most schools are coming back into school. Um, that's the Sunday. That could potentially have good attendance, but some people might not be present. Um, another one is. The eighth, but that is a little bit early. And then the twenty eighth or twenty, actually, twenty eighth or the first. But that is also after our commission meeting on the twenty third.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
I think that two potential dates that could work is. Um, the weekend of the twenty eighth, honestly, I know it's after our youth commission meeting, but. As you said, if Ski Week is the week before, I doubt people would honestly want to come on the Sunday of Ski Week. So I think a potential date, it would be pushing into March by like one day, would be either February twenty eighth or March first. And I honestly think maybe February eighth is too early or no?
February eighth is Super Bowl Sunday and it's in Santa Clara, so no.
Okay. Alright. Do we have any other commission opinions? Alright. Do we generally agree on wanting to vote on February twenty eighth and March first, or are there any other date proposals? Alright, do we have a motion to vote on February twenty eighth and March first as potential budget summit dates?
I, Commissioner Deschmuk, a motion to vote on February twenty eighth or March first as potential budget summit dates.
Do we have any seconds?
I, Commissioner Babu, second this motion.
Alright, please vote on your screens. Alright, the dates for February twenty eighth or March first have been passed as potential budget summit dates. We will now move on to item number six, reports and information only. Starting with the Council Liaison's report from Anthony Montez.
Test, test. Good evening, uh, Youth Commission. My name is Anthony Montez. I'm the Community Relations Coordinator. Uh, for council member Pamela Campos, who is the Youth Commission liaison. Uh, some of you are returning from your previous terms, some of y'all are new. Um, a little bit about me, um, I grew up in South San Jose. I um, worked for a nonprofit that did advocacy for uh, safe streets and active transportation. I've worked for other electeds in the past. Um, and now I'm serving a district that I grew up in, so it's an honor to do this work. Uh, it's an honor to um, represent um, the council member who is the liaison on this body. And um, want to provide a little bit of an update uh, for what has been going on. So, city council just came back from July recess. Every July, they um. Don't have any council meetings following the June bu- budget message. For those who are new to the budget process, it starts early. Um, March is where you get the mayor's message. The mayor's message outlines the priorities. Um, for uh, the administration, right? The city manager is the one that actually implements and actually runs the day-to-day. They're like the CEO. The mayor is more of um, kind of like, uh, he's really, he's our, he's our, um, you know, our, uh. What do you call him, like the POI? He's like the person who represents the city and he's our chief information officer in a, in a way. But he also sets a lot of the guidance. He has a lot of power in that way, so they work together. So March is the first one, May is uh, and then June rather is when you have the final vote, you're adopting the budget. So after that, you have a July recess and then in August, they come back. So there hasn't been a lot. Um, they usually, they ramp up because folks are, you know, still coming in and out. Um, some things that have happened in council the last three weeks. Um, there's been some just routine stuff like, you know, increasing, um, you know, parking tickets violations, the costs. Um, if you are fined, um, things like increasing the utilities, right? So, um, what happens with utilities is, you know, the um. City contracts with whatever, whomever it is, whether it's, you know, your electricity or it's um. Uh, you know, gas, garbage, water. Um, they all have to agree on some rate increases, so some of that happened. Um, and then two things that were interestingly contentious that you should, not contentious, but that. Had a lot of conversation the last couple of weeks that you should look into if you'd like. There was one um, item regarding um. Uh, essentially, the city administration was going to write a letter in opposition to a state bill that would have prolonged the procurement process. For certain um, services by, you know, giving, you know, if there's a, a, a bargaining unit. Or like a labor, um, you know, a labor union that had that service and now the city wants to find somebody else to do that service. The state bill would require the cities to give them a heads up and to prolong it, I think by like thirty or sixty days or something like that. So that was, there was a lot of back and forth about whether or not the city should endorse the opposition of that state bill. Um, and I think that's a really, like, if you're into like nerdy procurement stuff, that is probably going to be your bag. I would recommend reviewing that. Um, and then the, not so contentious, but something that I like to talk about is there was a card room regulation fee that was waived. Um, that, uh, so anytime you have, you set up a card room like Bay one oh one or Casino Matrix, right? You have to pay a fee so that the police department can regulate it to make sure that they're above board. So in June, um, councils recommended looking at cutting a couple of positions that were redundant. That, uh, the regulation was already done by the state regulators and the city was just doing redundant work. So they looked at cutting two positions and now the overall annual fee for the card room is. So they looked at cutting two positions and now the overall annual fee for the card room is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it decreased from a hundred and seventy, uh one million uh seventy-seven thousand. And that's two positions that were um that were removed. Um so that's basically the big stuff, so there hasn't been a lot. But I do want to flag tomorrow, there's going to be several items. It's going to be a pretty big meeting. Um there is a, an audit by the city auditor that looked at how marginalized communities are receiving traffic safety resources uh compared to community these outside of equity areas. Uh is anybody familiar with equity priority communities? So I'll uh, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission is a regional body that does a lot of great planning work across different um jurisdictions. They produce an index called Equity Priority Communities. And they look at like health outcomes, they look at um, sometimes they look at like uh air quality, um education, how many people are on food stamps and other services, and they produce, you know, this map of equity areas. What the auditor did was it looked at that and a San Jose Atlas, Equity Atlas, which does a similar thing, but just for San Jose. And they said, okay, how uh many um, you know, resources in terms of like quick builds, right? Quick builds are, you know, like what you see here in downtown with the green bollards for like the bike lanes, those are temporary, right? Um but they're looking at all these different treatments to see how they're being allocated. And for the most part, they found out um a lot of the equity areas are receiving a good amount of traffic safety resources and projects. But they weren't receiving the same amount of uh walk and roll and police school safety unit um resources. So the school safety unit for the police is like crossing guards, right? Um like those are actually paid people that PD uh hires and puts at different um schools. The other one was DOT Walk and Roll that does different like programming, encouraging kids to walk to school and also finding different barriers, why kids aren't walking to school. So they found that uh the walk and roll program wasn't servicing um those equity areas the same way they were servicing other areas. So that's a a interesting topic there. Another one is uh there's going, they're going to increase the rates. So anytime you have houses that are um out of code, out of compliance, right? Let's say, I don't know if you're in your neighborhood, there's a house that like is in really bad disrepair. Or maybe there's been people parked on the lawns or things like that. So there is actual standards that the city has. And if you don't meet those standards, you could get fined. So the city is going to be increasing those max penalties for those really problem homes um that are basically just being um neglected by, you know, absent landlords or people who are not reinvesting in their community. So um there's going to be an item around that. There's also going to be uh I won't talk too much about this because that's not really my expertise, is they're going to start um discussing the agreement with the Shark Stadium and Sharks Ice and the Tech CU Arena. Um to amend their current, their current agreement and then look at um new sites for a potential new arena in the next, and that's by twenty-twenty-seven, they should have identified something. Uh there's also a uh commitment in the report to uh do a shared funding to improve the current stadium. So there's a lot there. I I won't be able to talk too much about that just because of my lack of expertise on it, but I wanted to flag it for you because I I know it might be of interest. Um there's also going to be a general plan text amendment, so there's a four-year review. Um usually there is an advisory body of different community members. It's com- it's composed in a different way. Um this year, they're going to do something different with the four-year review and um the mayor and my boss are submitted a memo to um essentially kind of help guide what that advisory body looks like and to reaffirm that the council has the uh um you know, has the authority to to convene that um that body however they need to. So it's really important, right? Zoning, does anybody know what zoning is? Yeah, right, zoning is important. It's, it tells you where you can put a house, where you can put an apartment building, where you can put um a gas station or anything else, right? I know in District Two, there is a uh area where um there's a bunch of food trucks right now. That's technically out of compliance with zoning because it's a car, it's a zone for residential, but they're doing business, right? So those kinds of things are important. So uh reach out to your council member, see how you can get involved in that um, in that uh four-year review. And then um the last thing I'll shout out in terms of uh city council stuff. There is another item around speed limit reductions. So the state of California gave um cities the power to, they basically have more flexibility to reduce speed limits. Normally you have this thing called the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile rule. So you'll, you'll do a study and you'll say, okay, eighty-five percent of the cars are driving at this rate. So you're going to round to the nearest five, whatever it is. So if it's, you know, eighty-fifth percentile is fifty-five, fifty-six miles an hour, you're going to put it at fifty-five miles an hour. So this new law would say, actually, you can add another five to that. So even if it was at fifty-six, you can actually push it to fifty. That's a pretty big deal. I don't see my transportation nerds here. Um but uh one of the things that it's going to do in District Two um for us is there's going to be Monterey Blossom Hill. There's actually, if you look at the staff report, it's really easy to read. There's all the different roadways that are going to be impacted by this. And they did this in conjunction with the speed safety cameras that are going to be installed, so they prioritize those corridors. Because uh reducing the speed limit isn't enough, you need to actually change the built environment to slow people down. So uh you, you could argue that they could be more ambitious with their, with their speed limit reductions, but you, you have, there has to be, you know, a balance, right? Because you need to be able to um change the streetscape so that it almost in kind of reduces that eighty-fifth, what they call the prevailing speed, the eighty-fifth percentile, so you can have more wiggle room to go below. Um and then, so that's all for policy. Tomorrow is actually probably the heaviest day since they ca- they came back in early August. And then I'll go to events, uh Silicon Valley Pride is next Sunday, August thirty-first. Um if, reach out to your council member. I don't know off the top of my head which council members are participating. I do know two and three most definitely are. Um and two and three are going to be doing their march together. So um and you're more than welcome to and uh participate in the, in the march. Um in the parade. Uh in District Two, there's going to be a public safety town hall on September fourth. Uh there's also going to be Viva Calle on September seventh, which was just um mentioned earlier. Uh council member Campos is that going to be organizing a ride from Capital Expressway uh parking lot to Willow Glen. It's about a four-mile um uh ride. It's pretty leisurely. It's um you're going to be in a group with people who are experienced and we might even get a police escort. So it's really to encourage people to bike to Willow Glen, enjoy Viva Calle um without having to drive downtown, pull your bike out, you know, and I'll obviously use um a public transit, uh September is transit month. Um and also for citywide, there's going to be um Fiesta de Patrias, which is uh like Mexican, you know, independence. Um there's going to be an El Grido um festivity on September fifteenth. I think it's a Monday. If you can participate, that'd be great. Uh for our South San Jose folks, there's going to be a senior walk on October third. I think it's happening during school, actually. It's a Friday morning. Um but if there's a senior in your life that you love, that you want to get free swag and enjoy, um it's going to be a Halloween theme, so we're going to do a uh Halloween costume contest. Um please let them know, we'd love to, love to have them. Um with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
All right, do any commissioners have any questions? All right, thank you so much for your report. We really appreciate it. Very informative every time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our next report from Parks and Recreation Neighborhood Services from Lauren Box.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. Just give me one second. Hmm, technology. My apologies. Or give me, new computer, new problems uh this evening. Uh we'll just go this route. Uh thank you, everybody. Uh as mentioned, my name is Lauren Box, Recreation Superintendent for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Um thank you guys so much for having me this evening. I'm here to provide a few updates on what PRNS has been up to this last few months since June. Um welcome to the new commissioners. Uh so just as a recap, the Department of Parks and Recreation, uh Neighborhood Services services the city in a lot of different programs and services, um some of which go from programming for early childhood to teens to our older adults, uh all the way through to our uh gang impacted or gang intentional youth along with um members of our unhoused community who get resources um through the Beautify SJ program along with light and creep fee reduction. Um so with that, um wanted to share an grant opportunity that has just uh been released uh last week, actually. Um it is our opioid overdose prevention grant. Um this grant is going to be available to members of the public, or specifically like agencies, CBOs uh through Thursday, September twenty-fifth at four P M. There's going to be a informational session um that you can participate in, learn a little bit more about other requirements for applying to potentially receiving this grant opportunity. Uh more information can be found on our um department Facebook page along with our social media pages as well. Um kind of taking a step back into the summer season, which seemed many, many moons ago, at least for me. Um we had a very robust summer season. Uh what you see before you is a map of our summer operations. So across the city, uh we had over two thousand youth uh that participated in our summer camps, and that's everything from our flagship summer camps, which are Camp San Jose, uh Fit Camp Teen Leadership, Camp San Jose Junior, all the way through to our specialty programs um which focus on sports, um coding, music, dance, you name it, we probably offer it. Uh but in addition to that, we offered our teen centers uh throughout the city as well uh during the summer season. So um if you're not already participating in your local teen center, I highly encourage you do so, do so, or share that information with some of your friends. Um this summer season, we also operated seven summer food service programs throughout the city as well. Um summer food service programs, uh we'll talk about a little bit briefly. But uh those are predicated on census tract information that um ultimately the State Department of Education uh has oversight of um and that we work with to implement this program. Uh so like I mentioned, the Recreation Division uh oversees many summer camps for uh department and for residents throughout the city. So camps were available in all ten of our council districts this summer. Um and like I said, we had over two thousand youth um participate in our camp, so one thousand six hundred and ninety-one youth specifically uh in our Camp San Jose, and that camp is specifically um designed intentionally for elementary-age students. Uh and then our Fit Camp are, again, elementary age to middle school students as well. Uh but those really looking for those kids that love to be physically active, playing sports. Um some have expressed interest in going on to the majors uh as they get older. Um and then our Camp San Jose Junior, we had two hundred and seventy-two youth participate. This camp is specifically designed for our earliest learners here in San Jose, um ages three to five years old. So we're working on a lot of um maybe what someone would say is the basics. Um so listening, following simple directions, getting online, shapes, colors. Um but all disguised in um the sense of learning and fun. Um and then we offer a teen leadership camp out over at Seven Trees Community Center. We had thirty-one uh individual teams or unduplicated uh throughout the summer season participate in that. Um and like I mentioned, we had our summer food service program and that was offered at seven locations throughout the city. Um over the summer season, we served just shy of six thousand snacks um and about fifty-seven hundred lunches served. Um that program is free to participants at those seven locations. Um it's not a requirement that they partake in each of the meals or, or the meals or the snacks, uh but it's highly encouraged um since it's, it's free and they're quite tasty, having uh tried a few of them myself. But also, um all of these programs in an effort to ensure, you know, the highest quality programs, we ensure that they are aligned to the education and digital literacy policy uh which the department reports outs uh each year as part of that policy mandate. Um oops. Um one thing I just wanted to bring to attention for all of you and members of the public that are with us tonight. Um our fall classes uh will be start, starting, excuse me, uh around September fifteenth. Each of them are different depending on the day of the week that the class uh starts. Um but registration is still available both online and in person. Um residents can view our site-specific or program-specific uh brochures, or we call them community activity guides. Um both online and in person, you can pick one up at your local community center. Many of our uh friends in the public library have a stack at their respective branch as well. Uh but more information can be found if you scan this QR code, or again, you can just type it in online and it'll pop up for you if you're tech savvy. Um in the spirit of surveys, as the commissioners were talking about earlier, um the Recreation Division specifically within PRNS is looking for um some feedback from residents. Um our survey is available in four languages, so English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Chinese. Um and we're looking for feedback on how we can better serve you all as our residents, as our consumers. Um and let us know what's working, what's not working, um so that we can take that feedback and turn it into bill, into actionable um work for you. Um and again, all of this is available at your local community center, on our Facebook, uh Instagram, and uh the department website as well. Um on behalf of the Parks Division, um they are excited to share some new programming that will be taking place at Emma Prush Farm Park. Um if you haven't been out there, uh just about a year ago, they got a new playground structure, so definitely work definitely worth a gander. Uh but they have quite a few uh events coming up. Uh for those of you that like the spooky season, they'll be offering a new ghost tour um during the holiday spooky season, I should say. Uh more information for that can be also found on their specific Facebook page, or you can go to sjregistration.net for details of that. All of that does require advanced registration, so if that's something that's piques your interest, um highly encourage you to reach out to the staff at Emma Prush Farm Park. Um for those that are looking to give back to the community, um in a continued effort to help keep our parks clean and safe. Um our volunteer management unit, unit, excuse me, continues to host their Sunday series at parks across the city. Um that information is available on our department calendar, but you can also reach out to the volunteer management unit if you're looking to do something specific in your neighborhood um to focus on cleaning up and reducing garbage. Uh I heard this mentioned many times previously, uh but our Parks uh Division will be hosting its tenth birthday of Viva Cal S J. So this year, um in celebration of their tenth birthday, uh they'll be hosting ten miles of closed streets for residents on September seventh. Um for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to partake in it, it's a great time to get out, explore the city in a different means. You can start, stop wherever you like. Um definitely encourage you to get out, meet new friends, meet new neighbors. Um in addition to that, to close out the summer season, right around uh their tenth birthday, the Viva Parks team will be hosting events at Hester, Plata Royale, Payne Avenue Friendship Park and Cahalan Park as well as part of their Viva Parks Summer Series. Um several of those parks that I just mentioned uh will be hosting a movie night. Uh movie nights typically start at six P M, once the sun goes down, so you can see the movie. Um and it goes until about ten thirty P M roughly. Um in addition to that, they will be continuing to host their Paint the City S J events, and those are going to be offered through the month of September. Um again, those do require advanced uh registration because there's only so many seats and paint parlance available um for that event. Um next up is our friends over in the Community Services Division. Um this week, uh they will be hosting a dumpster day in Council District Four at the Berryas Community Center from eight A M to eleven thirty A M. Uh one caveat to that is, we say eleven thirty, but it's really predicated on how much space is left in the dumpsters or in the bins. Um so if you know somebody in Council District Four, um that's looking to get rid of some garbage um and don't need a sticker, um they're willing to take it over to the community center, they're welcome to do so um on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. Um this is more of a save the date for everybody. On September twentieth, there will be the California Coastal Cleanup. Um, so there's opportunities for groups to register and help pick up garbage, clean the coastal waterways. Um, and then as a reminder to folks that, um, might not be familiar with ways to report, uh, graffiti and illegal dumping, you can do so via the San Jose Three One One app, or you can do it on the website. There is information also available on the website and the app to report, uh, or to call in. Um, matters if you're uncomfortable or not quite sure how to navigate the app or the website for reporting purposes. Um, and lastly, uh, all of the department updates are going to be on our main social media platform, so Instagram, Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, uh, Nextdoor, and YouTube, and that is our handle at SJ Parks and Rec. Yeah, that's it for the evening. I'll be here for, if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. I think we are ready to move on to our next item, which is the San Jose Library Report from Deputy Director Anne Gerbowski.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks so much for having me. For our report today, we'll start by taking a look back over the fun things that happened at S J P L over the last month. Um, namely, we law, we launched the first ever S J Earthquakes Library Card, which was a huge blast. Um, on August ninth, we introduced that card to the community at PayPal Park, being on the field ourselves. There at that game, we issued a hundred and six library cards and gave away tons and tons of free books. Um, nearly six hundred people came to the outreach table to learn about the membership perks and all the services, and of course, get some really fun free things. Since that card was made available to the public on Monday, August eleventh, and our branches, nearly three hundred and fifty cards have been issued, and we're really excited that this card has helped people in the community be excited about their local public library. So if you want to convert your card, or someone in your family is a big Earthquakes fan, just have them come into any branch, and they can sign up for their, their very own Earthquakes Library Card. Saturday, August ninth, was a really busy day for us. On that same day, we helped, um, our friends in the Career Online High School Program hold a graduation ceremony where forty-four of them graduated with their high school diplomas and a career's, uh, technical certificate. That was the twelfth graduation that we've held in that program, um, and since the beginning in twenty seven, twenty sixteen, we've had two hundred and thirty-six San Jose adults earn their accredited high school diploma, which is really, really awesome. There's fifty more people that are currently enrolled and working towards that really big life goal. So thanks to the support from the San Jose Public Library Foundation, the California State Library, San Jose City Council, and Comcast, um, we can continue to offer that program at no cost to all of our San Jose residents who qualify. There's, if you're, if someone in your family or in your community, uh, would benefit from that program, you can find information about that on our website. Um, I won't bore you with the link, but it will be available in your notes. We had a great summer at S J P L, full of summer programs, just like our friends at PRNS. Uh, for summer learning, over eleven thousand five hundred residents joined us for our summer learning program, which ran from the very beginning of June to the very last day of July. We had a, that was a ten percent increase from the last year. Every single age group saw increases in signups, with the largest growth happening among readers and pre-readers. Each of those age groups, uh, increased about five percent. The completion rates also rose, with about forty percent of participants meeting the goal of reading eight books, or eight hours total. In total, readers logged over one hundred forty-two thousand books and three point one million minutes. Thousands of children's, thousands of children received free books. Hundreds of people won San Francisco Giants tickets and other giveaways, and one hundred and twenty-five grand prizes were awarded system-wide. Over eighty tickets to San Jose Earthquakes and Bay FC games were also distributed to our winners. The graphic novel making contest was in full flight over the summer as well. That contest ran from June first to July thirty-first, and had two hundred and seventy-two entries submitted by members of the public. Our staff and some of our volunteers judged the submissions, and winners will be announced live at the Graphic Novel Making Contest Award Ceremony on Saturday, September thirteenth, at two P M, in the rotunda and right here in council chambers. Age group winners will receive, uh, prize boxes, and all participants will get a prize. You, if you haven't been to the contest award ceremony, you should absolutely come. It's a lot of fun. We've got a lot of other really exciting events coming up at S J P L. Uh, the Pride Parade has already been mentioned, but our staff always has a really huge showing at, um, the Pride Parade, walking down the parade route, giving out books and flags and all kinds of fun things to help people feel comfortable and confident in their city. We will also have a book, uh, a booth at the festival afterwards. September is National Library Card Sign Up Month. Um, so if, again, if there's someone in your life that, that deserves and needs a library card, September is a great time to sign up. Tomorrow, August twenty-sixth, from five to seven, across the street at the King Library, we will have, um, a book panel discussion in partnership with the Y W C A. The event explores healing, justice, and activism through Amanda Nguyen's memoir, Saving Five, and features a panel with Vanessa Torres of the Y W C A, Melissa Luke, also with the Y W C A, supervisor Betty Young, Christina Johnson, who's the president of the Vietnamese-American Round Table, and our very own city librarian Jill Born. You can come and enjoy networking. It's going to be a great discussion with questions and answers and light refreshments, and it's of course free. Early in September, we'll have the Hidden Heritages San Jose Vietnamese Legacy Exhibit, an event happening on Saturday, September sixth, from four to five thirty, across the street at King Library in room two twenty-five. This is a special rededication event celebrating the next chapter of the San Jose Museum of Art's Hidden Heritage's, um, exhibit. So the museum of art curated this exhibit, and we are hosting it at King Library for the next several months. And this event is a kickoff to that exhibit. The event will have a discussion led by renowned journalist and author Andrew Lamb, a poetry workshop led by the twenty twenty-one National Youth Poet Laureate of the United's, uh, of the United States, Alexandra Nguyen. The exhibit is on display now, uh, and it will run until October twenty-sixth. And then lastly, for our exciting updates, we have our Fall Into Fiction Contest. This is our annual short story contest, which is open to writers of all ages. Um, submit your story online or at any S J P L location by September thirtieth for a chance to win prizes like gift cards and art supplies, and to be published by S J P L on our short edition platform. Our winners will be announced in early November. The, um, and then maybe the only other thing to let you all know is that we will be closed on Labor Day, but hopefully you're all out doing something fun or studying. Um, but with that, we wish you the happiest back to school, and we're so glad to see you back convened as a commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the wonderful report. Next up, we have the Chair Report from me. All right, so. Last weekend, we had our wonderful retreat, and I got to meet all of your guys' new faces. I'm so excited to be working with you guys this year, and I look forward to us getting things running, including all of your YACs, electing more leadership for your YACs. YACs. And also getting into your roles, like being the Outreach Chair and the Communications Director. I would like to call up some upcoming events to your attention, including the L E C on September seventeenth, which is our report to the Library and Education Commission, which is going to be me and Co-Chair Prithik Kumar on September seventeenth. If you guys want, you can watch that. And then, this one applies to you guys a little bit more. On October ninth at one P M, the Youth Commission will be reporting to the Neighborhood Services and Education Department here in City Hall. At this meeting, we're going to be giving a brief rundown on our plans for the year and also our report. We usually bring four to five commissioners with us to help give the report. Um, if you guys would like to help deliver this, please let me know, um, and you guys can participate. It's a really good opportunity to get up there and speak, and you get to sit in those fun chairs right there. Next, September seventh at ten A M, we will be attending Viva Kaya as a commission. It's a really good opportunity to bring your YACs, to do some promotion, and you guys can organize your YACs in any way you want, if you want to do shifts, or if you want to stay the whole time. Next, this weekend, there is a meeting with the California Association of Student Councils over Zoom, and we have been invited to participate. It is on the thirtieth. Um, more information will be sent out later, but I wanted to let you guys know. And finally, we are working on ad hocks right now, me and Neha, and hopefully by next month, we can get them approved. All right. That concludes my report. We will now move on to the Commissioners' Reports per city district, starting with District One.
Hello. So this is my first year on the commission. So currently, I am working on building my YAC, and I'll close applications on September eighth. I'm currently working with Emily to set a meeting date for that, so most likely it would be September tenth, which is a Wednesday, and most likely it would be held at Calabasas Library. So also, if any of you could attend as well, that would also be great, just to see your faces. And as Communications Director, I'm currently working on my communications plan throughout the year, and scheduling posts for different events that I know where it's going to happen, such as the Budget Summit, Viva Kaya, et cetera, and also our meetings. One idea I had was giving out a short post before every meeting, just inviting people to attend and see the meeting. I didn't get to do it this time because I wasn't prepared yet, but I'm hoping by the next meeting, I'll be able to do that. And the most recent post that I want to get out is an introduction to all the Commissioners. So one thing I'm going to text later is asking everyone for a short bio about themselves to do an introductions post about everyone, using the photos that we took at the retreat.
District Two Commissioner Park, I mean, whoa. District Two Commissioner Prithik Kumar.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I guess congrats on a very successful first meeting. Um, I'm very proud of all of you guys, um, and just the way you guys are organizing everything, whether it just be, you know, your YAC meetings, or even just asking questions. Um, yeah, good job, guys. So I wanted to start off with my report, with stuff I did over the summer. Um, I had the chance to meet with Councilmember Campos and officials from her office to discuss priorities she had for District Two, and ways the Youth Commission and my YAC can get involved. And following that, we started the promotion for, um, the District Two YAC on Instagram, and as you all know, applications are live. And I plan to have our first meeting, um, in the middle of September. And coming up, I will be attending the District Two Public Safety Town Hall on September fourth, which is hosted by the Office of Councilmember Campos. And yeah, that's all I have for my report. Also, I wanted to let you guys know that if you have any questions or concerns, you can always reach out to Marion or myself, and we'll also be happy to attend your YAC meetings if you let us know when they are. Thank you.
District Three Commissioner Sanchez.
Uh, again, I'd like to second, you guys had a great first meeting. I don't remember asking that many questions in my first meeting, but uh, I think I'll get up, I'll start off by like saying, uh, we, I was able to see my new council member at my school, now that we opened, uh, the second building. And now that we have a plan for what time we're going to have the Budget Summit, I think I'm going to go and try to ask my school if they can try and, um, like, let us use their building and see if we have enough space and room for enough people for the Budget Summit. There's a lot of breakout rooms that we could use, and what else? Uh, I'm setting up a meeting with Emily to discuss all of the YAC, um, applications and everything that I'm going to start up. And yeah, I don't have much for this time, but I'm excited for the rest.
All right. District Four Commissioner Babbin.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, I want to thank Megan, Emily, and I believe Sim, um, for putting together the agenda. I feel like that was really helpful. Thank you so much. Um. And some YAC updates I have for District Four. I put out the applications, and the applications for District Four are due this Sunday. Um, and I plan on wrapping interviews up for leadership positions within my YAC by next week, hopefully. And I should be starting my YAC meetings, like, early to mid-September. And I'm in the process of coordinating a meeting time with Emily. I believe we decided this Thursday, or tomorrow, um, tomorrow, and I'll be working on my work plan with her. And then I also, um, something specific that I want to do within my YAC is, um, adding like more ad hocks. So I would like to have a transportation and safety team, like we did for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four year. And I think that team did really well, and I would like to bring that back. And yeah, super excited for this year. Thank you.
District Five Commissioner Guerrero.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you so much for being here and spending your afternoon. Um, a couple of things, um, I am in the process of accepting and interviewing for like my YAC members. I have spoken to previous YAC members to just gain their insight and gain how, um, it used to be run, since I am new, and this is my first year. I would love that insight. Um, our meetings will like, most likely be held in the, um, Dr. Roberto Cruz Library or Hillview Library, um, if that is possible, just because of the, of the district's, um, boundaries. I feel that would be very accessible to, um, my YAC members. Um, and I plan to have our first meeting in either late August or early September. Um, as well, I'm in close contact with Councilmember Ortiz, and would love to share some events, um, the District Five is hosting. In the meantime, they, my YAC plans meetings and events, um, in case any of you would love to join. Um, so last week, Councilmember Peter Ortiz introduced a new proposal to establish a thirty million East San Jose revitalization fund to improve East San Jose Parks, invest in beautification projects, um, support small businesses, and so much more. Um, this is something I would love for my YAC members to potentially get involved in the, in the future, um, and see how we can, um, work with this or do our own thing around this. Um, and if any of you would like to join, um, we're actually having our first public, well, they're having their first public hearing at the San Jose Rules Committee, um, right here on Wednesday at one thirty P M, in case any of you would like to come. And as Mr. Um, Monte said, El Grito, which is Mexico Independence Day, we're hosting that on September fifteenth, um, on Sunday also here. So yeah, that's a bit about what's going on in the district.
District Six Commissioner Canfield.
Hi, everyone. So this is my first year on the Youth Commission, and, um, I just want to say that I learned a lot at the retreat, and I learned a lot from this meeting, and I'm excited to do more going forward. I'm very proud of the work plan we made, especially the Arts and Culture Section, so I'm excited to start, um, finding out ways to grow that. And so this, so far, I've had one application to my YAC. I've put my, uh, mid flyer, which I'm sending in the District Six Councilmembers Newsletter to get more applications. Hopefully, I will have a YAC established by mid-September, and I can start our first meeting late September. And finally, I have a one-on-one meeting set up with Emily on September.
District Seven Commissioner Quinn.
Hi. Um, so for District Seven, uh, we have opened our application since mid-July, and we're aiming, I'm going to aim to close it by August thirty-first. Um, right now, I'm going through the process of, um, touching base with all the returning YAC members, as well as, um, meeting up, touching, uh, meeting with the new YAC members. Actually, before this meeting, I met with two new YAC members on Google Meets to kind of, uh, introduce them to the Youth Commission and to the YAC. Um, and aside from that, I'm really hoping to plan our first meeting in mid-September and really get things rolling, and, because we have a very busy year ahead. Um, and as, in terms of outreach, as an outreach officer, I will be working on the outreach plan sometime soon. Yes. Thank you.
District Nine Commissioner Yu.
Hi, everyone. Um, this is also my first year on the commission, and I'm really excited to work with you guys. So I haven't been up to much, but right now, I'm, I'm working on flyers for recruiting for my YAC. I'm planning on, um, getting around maybe fifteen members for the YAC this year. And, uh, so I've reached out to, like, people who have, who didn't get responses, um, with their applications last year. And, um, I've gotten, so like, in total, I've gotten like eleven or twelve applications. So looking for like three or four more to fill in the last spots. And, um, we'll start, and so like, I don't really have a set date to end applications, and I'll just get started when I have enough people in my YAC. Yeah, that's all.
District Ten Commissioner Park.
Hello. So, um, my YAC is already up and going. Um, we almost have twenty members already, and we've already, um, decided our positions as well. And then for the YAC applications, I want to keep it open, um, all year round, so that I can grow the YAC, um, as we go. um all year round so that I can grow the Yak um as we go. And then for my Yak, we are also volunteering at AVCA, Almeden Valley Community Association every month, and um that's where Councilmember George Casey speaks and occasionally Mayor uh Mayhead. And we have signups for those volunteer spots already filled, and we've already had one August eleventh and which was pretty successful. So um yeah, that's that's it for me.
All right, as for my report, I'm currently working on restructuring my Yak and creating a work plan for how we will conduct meetings for this year, since we are transitioning our role from an independent Yak to a support Yak to help with the commission's work this year. I don't have any updates on it yet, but I'll make sure to have some by next month. All right, so we will now move on to item number seven, items for future commission meeting agendas. Do any commissioners wish to add items to any future agendas? All right. Moving on to item number eight, meeting schedule and agenda items. The next commission meeting will be on Monday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, right here at six thirty PM in the council chambers. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Aye, Commissioner Canfield motion to approve to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have any seconds?
Aye, Commissioner Babu second this motion.
Please vote on your screens. All right, the meeting is now adjourned.